Welcome to the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel. This morning, a public hearing about House Bill 4005. The purpose of the bill is to repeal the article requiring public authorities engaged in the construction of public improvement projects to pay a prevailing hourly rate of The bill is sponsored by delegates Householder, Cowles, Duke, Foster, Gearhart, Miller, Overington, Schott, Walters, Waxman, and Westfall. This hearing is being held by the House Government Organization Committee chaired by Delegate Gary Howell of Mineral County, the vice chair as Delegate Lynn Arvahn of Raleigh County.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the public hearing on HB 4005, the repealing prevailing hourly rate of wage requirements. We'll try and allocate the time for everyone to be heard because there's so much interest in the bill. We ask that you have, if you have a group, that you have a designated speaker for the group, and we're three minutes each.
Yeah.
The time will be limited to three minutes each. When your time is up, the red light will come on next to the podium. Please try and finish up the sentence that you're on, and then we will call up the next person. We will, please respect all of the presenters, allow everyone to be heard. We ask that you do not applaud or boo. The public hearing is to hear your support and concerns about the bill, and we ask you to keep your remarks to the legislation only. If you have any written remarks, please present them to my staff here. And the first person to speak will be Brian O'Donnell, and who, Sean O'Leary, if they could be on deck and come up and wait their turn, that would be helpful. Go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
I'm the Reverend Brian O'Donnell. I'm here representing the West Virginia Council of Churches. The Council of Churches is very cautious about changes in such legislation. You may know that the Council of Churches represents major denominations in the state, Methodist, Catholic, Brethren, Disciples, the list is long. And we have a consensus document on various public policies that we all kind of agree on. The 2016 one ought to be out quickly. There is a section on working people. Unsurprisingly, the faith community is very much interested in the well-being of working people, very interested in collective bargaining, that it be strong. The document doesn't say that much about prevailing wage, but it makes an interesting link between prevailing wage and the welfare of communities in which workers live. And here's what they say. "They support prevailing wage laws that provide wage protection for communities where public construction dollars are spent." Period. If you look at this document and what else is said about working people and their welfare by the West Virginia Council of Churches, at the very least, the stance of the faith community is that legislators should be very careful and very clear that any changes in laws like prevailing wage right to work should absolutely provide a better life for working people and a better economic situation for our state. Thank you.
Sean O'Leary, followed by Keith Hughes.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Leary. I'm an analyst with the West Virginia Center on Budget and Policy. We are a nonprofit policy and research organization. And in the state's prevailing wage, it's likely not to have any impact on public construction costs, which is the purpose of the legislation, but it could hurt the living standards of construction workers and the competitiveness of local construction firms. No empirical analysis or real statistical study have shown that prevailing, the state's prevailing wage laws inflates its public construction costs. Instead, just hypotheses of what-if scenarios, hypotheticals, or cherry pick projects with no statistical significance have shown that. Not only have these research consistently found no statistical relationship between prevailing wage laws and public construction costs, they've also shown that West Virginia's construction costs are lower than in those neighboring states like Ohio, Virginia, North Carolina, all states with prevailing wage laws. Prevailing wage laws help attract and retain workers with skills and experience. Workers who earn the prevailing wage are more productive and valuable to employers. This means that companies are more willing to invest in apprenticeship programs for their workers and create a more skilled workforce for the state. More skilled workers mean fewer accidents. Workers in prevailing wage states are less likely to be injured at work with lowers workers' compensation costs for their employers. Repealing the state's prevailing wage laws would cost West Virginia workers tens of millions of dollars annually in lost income, cost the state millions of dollars in lost tax revenue, and without significantly affecting lowering public construction costs. Prevailing wage laws strengthen the economy by helping ensure public construction projects are done by local workers at a fair wage. This helps grow the economy as local workers spend their wages in their community, as well in helping, helping grow the local tax base. Local labor and construction firms also benefit by making it better for them to bid on construction projects, knowing that they are competing on the quality and the scale of their workers, not just who can provide the cheapest labor. Studies have shown that prevailing wage laws increase wages and benefits not just for construction workers who earn the prevailing wage, but across the industry. As for calls that let the market decide when it comes to setting public wages, they don't make sense. Public procurement doesn't operate in the free market. Government is the single largest purchaser of construction services comprising 20 to 30% of all construction expenditures. The only way for government not to influence the private construction industry will be to stop building schools, stop building roads, stop building bridges, stop building government buildings. We don't expect government to stop doing those things, so the real question when this policy comes up should be how can government procurement policies influence the construction industry in order to create a more level playing field? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith Hughes, followed by Brian Holloman.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here today. My name's Keith Hughes. I'm a resident of Marshall County. I was previously the business manager for the Ironworkers Local Union and Wheeling, and I currently work for a small general contractor who's been in business for approximately 90 years, Jarvis Downing and Emson Wheeling. I feel this background provides me a unique perspective on both the labor and business or management side of this prevailing wage issue. One piece that we don't talk about in too much detail is the medical and health insurance piece of the prevailing wage. I'm specifically here to urge you to consider the economic support that prevailing wage dollars return to the West Virginia medical community. Data's been accumulated, and we have a spreadsheet from over a dozen joint labor management funds which support 20,000 craftsmen and their dependents. These numbers total nearly $40 million from, at 17 hospitals in West Virginia. So the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Studies says, with their statistics which are consistent year after year, this represents about 30% of the total expenditures from those funds. So with those nationwide statistics, we can extrapolate that and say that they also spend $28 million, which is 20% of their money, at physicians' offices and clinics. You can add $12 million to prescription drug costs by these funds. Folks, that's $80 million that this prevailing wage dollars are being returned to the medical community. That's from our funds. That doesn't take into account the open shop contractors that do just as much business as we do. Some of that $80 million is returned to the hospitals and to the community by way of hiring nurses, doctors, receptionists, aides, technicians, radiologists, accountants. They purchase supplies and other necessities to run those hospitals and offices. The list goes on and on. And I can almost assure you that some on this committee that's here today, you have a son or a daughter, maybe a spouse, works at one of those hospitals. Could these hospitals afford to lose in excess of $100 million in revenue? I don't believe so. So think about this. As a legislature, you are contemplating eliminating a class of skilled craftsmen that return, as I said, $100 million to the West Virginia economy. Will the legislature be prepared to support their health care? Will a hospital be prepared to support their health care? Who's going to pay for their children's, their dependents' vitamins and wellness care? There's a lot of issues here. This group I'm speaking about, we manage our own health care by working for a fair wage. The state of West Virginia may soon realize more burden and deficit with repeal of prevailing wage.
Thank you, sir.
By way of the medical community. Thank you.
Brian Holloman, followed by Steve White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Brian Holloman. I'm the president of the Associated Builders and Contractors of West Virginia. We represent commercial construction companies here in the mountain state. Our position on this legislation is in full support of a repeal. Our contractors believe that the market is not only capable of determining wage rates on public projects, but that it's the only fair and objective approach for the state's taxpayers. We've heard a lot about what life would be like without prevailing wage, but what we have to remember is that we've had it with a temporary repeal of the state's requirement in the summer and fall of 2015. We were able to analyze and look at this a little bit more closely, and what we found during this period was not chaos and confusion that we were promised. We found that we saved millions of dollars on state projects. Square foot costs for building projects, particularly school construction, decreased anywhere from $20 to $25 per square foot after putting them under the exact same criteria, despite what you hear. We actually refer to the contractors on these projects for these specifics whenever we could. We also found that companies from out of state were winning more projects with prevailing wage in place than they were without it. We had four major elementary school construction projects during that temporary repeal. They were all in border counties in different regions of the state. They all had out-of-state contractors bid on them. Not one of them went to an out-of-state contractor. They all went to in-state construction companies despite the lack of a mandated wage rate. It's also important to note that repealing prevailing wage laws in the state of West Virginia does not alter or affect or impair any of the state's safety or quality standards that are put in place. The requirements for these different qualifications are very strict and complex when you choose to bid on a project. In fact, I've seen companies with a low bid on multimillion dollar projects be disqualified because they forgot a reference page. So these type of restrictions and standards for qualifications would not change or alter in any way with this repeal of these particular code sections. The same with the standards that companies have for drug testing, workforce development, training would all remain the same. I want to clear the notion that you can simply pick up anyone off the street, go around and bid on state projects. You can't do that. You have to be a qualified bonded contractor. Your workers have to meet safety requirements and other aspects. So in closing, I want to ask, with the elephant in the room, how we can knowingly justify paying inflated wage rates for public improvements by eliminating this particular mandate and allowing for competition and freeing up additional revenue, then we're ultimately going to be creating new projects, which is going to call for more demand of our market and create new jobs for construction in the mountain state. Again, I appreciate the time and to the committee and the chairman. Thank you.
Steve White, followed by Alan Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve White, Director of Affiliated Construction Trades. And first of all, I want to thank everyone who came here today. A great showing. I appreciate everybody's effort for being here. Now, I'm here to testify against the bill to repeal in support of prevailing wage because it's the best economic development law that has been on our books for many years. It does just what we would all want. It helps local contractors and local workers get the jobs that our tax dollars fund. Now, that is a sentiment that the public supports and that we support. And I want to just touch on two things. First of all, I couldn't disagree more respectfully with the previous speaker about the supposed savings from the repeal of prevailing wage. It is simply not true. We've got a study that we've done that did, that looked at thousands of projects and shows conclusively. You look at the states that don't have prevailing wage around us, Virginia, North Carolina. We build schools in West Virginia cheaper than those states. We with prevailing wage build them cheaper than those without, per square foot. That's what matters to the taxpayers, the per-square-foot cost. And so the idea that we can save money was floated out there. Five schools for the price of three is what was said. We did have a period of time where there was no prevailing wage, three months, and the savings that are supposed to have occurred were not there. And we will sit dollar for dollar, we've got the documents, we'd love to have time with the committee to show you that when you take away site conditions, contaminated soil, and things that were specific to the job, the cost per square foot did not change, did not change. I also just want to quickly go over the significant things that did happen last year. We had a bill last year, it, you know, call it compromise, what you will, a $500,000 threshold, a new agency to figure out what the prevailing wage is. We've got, the universities came up with the agency with the new methodology. Collective bargaining agreements are no longer able to be used for data for that new survey. Counties are grouped as opposed to single counties before. These are all significant changes that were made last year, and we are here, not only the workers, but the many employers that we work and depend on getting jobs. We're here to say, let this process work. If there's changes that need to be made to the, to the methodology or details, we're more than welcome to talk about it. We have the facts to back up what we say, and we need to keep prevailing wage because it's the best deal for our communities, for our workers, and for our industry. So I thank again everybody for coming here, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I'll remind those, there are not to show anything in favor or against. Alan Nelson, followed by C.R., and I'm having trouble reading this, Nebergall.
Good morning. My name is Alan Nelson, Training Director for the Operating Engineers Apprenticeship and Journey Workers Training Improvement Site. I'm here on behalf of the operating engineers in all construction trades to ask that you would leave prevailing wage in place. The trades provide the necessary training for our members, so our contractors, the local state of West Virginia's contractors, have a drug-free, safe, and skilled workforce. I know you've heard from our local contractors. They need the construction trades and our skills to be competitive and provide a quality product. You have already witnessed the numbers. Our prevailing wage contractors can build state projects in the most cost-effective and quality manner. Our apprenticeship and skills improvement programs are funded by prevailing wage rates, not donations or car washes. With prevailing wage in place, it provides more opportunities for us to expand our apprenticeship intake and give other men and women in West Virginia a chance in life. Apprentices don't have to pay to attend, to go through our training program. The trades invest their money into these people. Who's going to pay for training the influx of nonresidents when they come to West Virginia if these bad bills pass? They will come, and then they will leave West Virginia behind. Will the state pay for this training or the low-wage, no-benefit contractor with little or no background? And then I ask, where does this leave us when we can't operate? Maybe the state of West Virginia will support us. After all, we live here, spend here, and pay our taxes here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. C.R. Nebergall, and if I butchered that, I apologize, followed by Mark Grigsby.
Good morning. My name is C.R. Nebergall with Nebergall Construction in Huntington. My great-grandfather started our company about 90 years ago. We do a tremendous amount of public work, very proud of all the work we do, very proud of all the folks that work with us. Prevailing wage is very important to preserve those jobs and our competitive level playing field in West Virginia. If you repeal it, we will lose a significant amount of business, I believe, over time, and our workers will suffer, our communities will suffer. You've heard all the data. I also wanted to say thank you, folks, for your service and dedication to the state and to public service. Just please consider maintaining prevailing wage. We have a modified, we, last session, right, we modified the methodology for calculation. If that still needs some work, so be it, but don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that compromise and communication can work to improve even the system and maintain prevailing wage. Again, it's very important to my family, my company, and the families of the folks that work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mark Grigsby, followed by... Mark Grigsby, followed by Jim Carnet.
Well, I had two pages of information, and I'm going to discount most of that because of time. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'll start you out with a little information on me. I am a conservative Republican. My good friend in the gallery right now, Jim Haley, is going, oh, why do you have to say that? But I am a proud business owner and president of Prey Construction Company, a local construction company, and I can assure you, the right-to-work issue is not going to impact our business. It won't. We'll go on. We just won't have any employees. They won't work for us anymore. I'll give you a real-world example. Right now, I have multiple projects going in our local market. You see our signs. I'm also doing a circuit courthouse in Virginia, Dickinson County, Virginia. Find folks down there, find, found themselves in a real hole. The coal industry's left them short of dollars. They got sued. They had to build an eight million, or what the courthouse cost in Virginia to build are about $15 million. They had $8 million. So they chose to do it design-build. They, they're working with us. We're going to get it done for the $8 million. But I walked on the job the other day, and it was interesting to me. One of our key subcontractors, most of the work is subbed out, has about 30 to 40 men on the job, big contractor. And I asked the superintendent, I said, now, do all these men work for this contractor? He said, no, none of them do. I said, what? Turns out, the sub that we gave the job to, subbed it out again. Only about two of the folks speak English. The foremen speak English. None of the rest of them do. None of them from the local market. They all influx from out of town. This is what we will have. This, and to find the job, go to Pikeville, make a left. It's Dickinson County, Virginia. It's their new circuit courthouse. I can assure you, that's not what we want in the state of West Virginia, what is happening right down there. Now, my other friends tell me all the time that the Sisville Volunteer Fire Department gets cast around up here in somewhat of a light. Let me just clear up an issue there. You know, when, when, when the firehouse burned down and they were going to build a new firehouse out there, there were a lot of community members stepped up and said, look, we want to help, we want to help. We'll give you this, we'll give you that, we'll give you this. But when the, you know, when it came time to build it, these folks aren't insured, they have no workers' comp, they have none of the things that I can put on the job. Now, they bid the job out. Their bid came in at about $1.8 million. They came to me and they said, can we fix this? I said, yeah. And we built the job for $1.4 million. But what we did is we changed the design. We didn't use substandard contractors either. The last thing they needed to do was, because their house burned down and they didn't have insurances, put contractors on there without insurance to build it. So while all these people are well-meaning and wanted to give the services, they couldn't do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Carnet, followed by Matt Sims.
Good morning, guys. My name is Jim Carney with Oval Construction Management, managing member. Started a company about 12 years ago with very little money, nothing more than willingness to work hard. For prevailing wage, so are my 30 to 40 men. Talked to them out there this morning, diligently working, productively in the cold, looking at me with hungry eyes. Mostly, I'm here to support my, you know, my business. We believe that prevailing, to eliminate prevailing wage will also eliminate our So, that being said, please consider the businesses in this state when you vote for this repeal prevailing wage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Matt Sims, followed by Jason Huffman.
Good morning. My name is Matt Sims. I'm a partner with Dixon Electrical Systems. Our business was established in 1998, and we, we, we have about 80 employees. What prevailing wage would do to us as a business would reduce our business probably 50%, 50 to 60%. More than that, what it would do would impact the hard-working men and women that we do The significant impact would be on, on the families. They would be taking away their health insurance, their benefits, their pension. We would also not be able to provide the necessary training that we invest in through the IBW. Dixon Electric is a member of National Electrical Contractors Association and also a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. All of our employees have a five-year training period. Without the prevailing wage, the monies are not there for the qualified workers and the training necessary. All of our employees go through a LEAD program, which is a drug-free program. They carry a card and are very proudful of that and as well as we are. There are several consequences for the repeal of prevailing wage. One of them is, these are statistics that are proven, a younger, less workforce, which leads to more accidents. If you don't have the safety training, which we provide, which the monies in prevailing wage provides, then you're going to get more accidents. Lower wages, which affects the local economy. Lower wages also brings out-of-state and even out-of-the-country workers. I heard another gentleman say, speak about, some of them didn't even speak English. And, and if you go to other states without prevailing wage, that is what you see. If you go to North Carolina, some of the places, Columbus, down in Florida, some, some of those areas, and I don't think, I'm sorry, lower, also would bring lower health care, which, lower health care means more families without the proper health insurance, which means that they will be dependent upon the government more. Last but not least, I'd like to, I'd like to speak about the effects in Michigan. Studies show that the cost of the buildings in Michigan after the repeal was no less. They did not gain anything from the repeal in Michigan. With that being said, I'd just like to say thank you, and please consider the repeal of this bill.
Thank you, sir. Jason Huffman, followed by Rick Wilson.
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, on behalf of more than 11,000 Americans for Prosperity activists across West Virginia, I stand in strong support of repealing this antiquated prevailing wage government mandate. Eliminating this anti-free-market requirement will help expand competition, is proven to save taxpayers' money, and makes budgets go further with what West Virginia is obviously in need of right now. We've already seen this at the county level, where substantial savings into the hundreds of thousands of dollars on individual projects have been reported on new classroom construction. Spending less money on construction means more money for other things, like classroom education for our kids, tax relief, and patching the holes in our budget. In addition to harming taxpayers, prevailing wage laws harm small businesses, job seekers, and lower-income families. Small businesses often lack the deeper pockets of larger, more established companies. This hampers their ability to compete on artificially inflated prevailing wage projects. Government-mandated wages disproportionately harm lower-income communities since the rates rarely mirror actual local market wages. Lawmakers are constantly debating tax policy, whether and how to spend on things like education, transportation, healthcare, and public safety. By eliminating this outdated and expensive prevailing wage mandate, we will have more resources available for other priorities and get more bang for the taxpayer's buck. Construction should not cost us extra simply because the taxpayer is footing the bill. Once again, on behalf of more than 11,000 activists across West Virginia, Americans for Prosperity strongly supports House Bill 4005 and the repeal of this archaic practice.
Thank you, sir. Rick Wilson, followed by Thomas Samples.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rick Wilson with the American Friends Service Committee. I'm here to speak on behalf of retaining the prevailing wage. We hear a lot about the market and the way it works, but it's important to remember that government is a major procurer for construction projects for things like schools, public educational institutions, roads, bridges, public buildings, saying the market on its own does not provide. Beginning in the 1930s, state and federal legislators, many of whom were Republicans, took steps to ensure that the wages paid on these projects didn't undermine the local standard of living by granting contracts to fly-by-night, low-wage contractors who perform shoddy works under unsafe conditions. Contrary to rumors, local prevailing wage laws don't guarantee public works projects go exclusively to union or even to local contractors. They do, however, ensure a well-trained and productive labor force and contractors who compete on the basis of efficiency, productivity, and quality. If you remove and weaken prevailing wage standards, you put pressure on contractors to cut back on training programs, wages, healthcare, pensions, and possibly safety as well. West Virginia desperately needs policies that raise families up, not tear them down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Samples, followed by Glenn Jeffries.
Good morning. Thank you, excuse me, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I imagine most of us in here already have our minds made up on a lot of these issues, and I would like to convince you in the next 60 seconds that if you keep your minds open, you can learn something. Now, Mr. Chairman, you referred to this earlier as a podium. I'm a, a training director, and that means I'm an electrician and a teacher. And the teaching part of that is, I change minds on a daily basis. That's what I get paid to do. And I'm going to pass on to you that this is not a podium. I, I think that should come as a shock to you. From the Latin word, potus, for feet, you have a podium. Podium is something you can stand on. I don't have anything to stand on. This is a lectern. I hope a lot of you just learned something. It's 8:30 in the morning, and we're already learning. So if you keep your minds open for just a minute, I told you I was a training director for the apprenticeship. We have about 50 guys and gals that we're training right now to do these local jobs. And as I was signing in this morning, I noticed on that sheet, oppose, 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 oppose. Where are all the people that support this, other than the Americans for Prosperity, who seems to think that taxpayers are different than construction workers? Like, those are two different groups. They're not. They're, they're, they're the one and the same. So, so where are they? Where are all these that oppose? Well, I think they would like to be here, but they couldn't because it's a long drive. They, they would have to come up from South Carolina, they would have to come up from North Carolina, and that's what we see on these jobs, is these out-of-state workers. And myself, I, I'm a construction worker for 20 years, my wife's a teacher. The only reason that West Virginia can even think about building fire departments and new sidewalks, and we hear these same worn-out stories about how, you know, they, they just didn't have enough money. Well, the reason they can even consider these projects is because of people like me that have a fair wage and we're paying all of our taxes. I checked my bank account this morning. I've got less than $1,000 in there. Every one of my paychecks goes right back into Putnam County, where I live, and the schools, the grocery stores, the piano lessons and boy scouts, it all gets spent right back here. So when we think about this, think about where this money is coming from. I am a taxpayer, and I am concerned about this. So, I oppose. Thank you for your time.
Again, I will remind those present there not to show favoritism for or against. Glenn Jeffries, followed by Mike Klausser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, committee members. My name is Glenn Jeffries. I am the president of Cornerstone Antiers. I'm here to talk to you this morning about prevailing wage. And the reason that this bill is brought up is to talk about the tax savings that can be saved, the taxpayers' monies that can be saved on mostly school projects. And that's what I want to focus on, is about the school projects. Last month, or, or last year, the, the Senate Council was given the task to look at four schools. Two schools were prevailing wage and two were non-pervailing wage. During that period of the non-pervailing wage, we had no established wages at all. We had what we called the open market. We had the free market that everybody was thinking that we should have for this, for here at this state. And we were told that we'd have those great savings. So as the Senate Council grabbed their information and looked at the schools, they came up with, with their determinations. Now, in order to do that, they were told that they were to take the cost to find out what the building costs of the schools were. Now, in order to do that, there are certain things that got, that have to happen, and that is to maybe remove site costs and FF and E costs, soft costs and so forth. Well, I have their document here. I looked at their document, and as I started looking at it, things didn't, they weren't panning out. They didn't look right. So, I went to the architects and asked for their schedule values for each one of these projects. Well, immediately, I looked at one of the projects. One of them needed to be thrown away because it, it totally was different than, than the other three projects. So eliminated that project, and we came up with three projects of the same type of construction. Two of them were non-pervailing wage, one of them was prevailing wage. I have that document here. I went through it, got rid of the site cost, FF and E, soft cost, and so forth. There's only a few dollars of savings between the schools. Now, you may say savings, savings mean, that's kind of hard to look at because you've got to look at the locations of the schools. That's why some of the costs are different sometimes. One of the schools, a non-pervailing wage school, was, was one of the contractors that was here to speak just a little bit ago. He pays wages that are comparable to prevailing wage. I looked at the other two projects, and they were given to one contractor. One of them was prevailing wage, and the other one was non-pervailing wage. There was 52 cents a square foot difference in cost between those two schools. I thought, wow, where is the taxpayer's savings at? Five schools for three. It's not there. So I went a little bit further and I looked, I went a little bit further and I looked, and I, I figured the certified payrolls. On the prevailing wage school, he paid the prevailing wage, like he's supposed to. On the non-pervailing wage school, he cut the wages by 35%. 35%. No savings.
Thank you, sir.
Only people got to talk to these people up here.
Glenn Jeffries, followed by, that was Glenn Jeffries. That's all right. Mike Klausser, followed by Mike Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Mike Klausser. I'm with the Contractors Association of West Virginia. We represent about 450 members statewide, who I always say build the fabric of West Virginia. Our members build schools, the highways, our bridges, our water and sewer systems, and the hospitals that keep, keep West Virginians moving. Our position on this bill last year was that we did not support total repeal of prevailing wage, but we did support looking at how we calculated those wage rates going forward. Our position today stands as it did last year. We still oppose total repeal of prevailing wage, but there's been a lot of discussion on the methodology that was developed. And thanks to this committee and the legislature, we did develop a methodology going forward to calculate wage rates for state projects. The question that is out there, I think, on a lot of legislators' minds, is whether or not that methodology gave us enough background, enough information, to truly determine what is considered prevailing in the state of West Virginia. So our association today is still committed to working with this committee, Mr. Chairman, still working with members of the legislature, to make sure that we retain a prevailing wage on projects going forward, and to come up with something that is truly reflective, that truly will, will allow West Virginia contractors and West that truly will allow West Virginia contractors and West Virginia workers to continue working and building those projects within West Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, members of the committee. My name is Mike Davis, I'm vice president and general manager of G&amp;G Builders. We're a full-service general contracting, design, build, and construction management firm. This year, we celebrate our 40th year in business. We build commercial projects, we build school projects, and up until very recently, we were very active in the coal market. We built the Training Center for Alpha Natural Resources, which is known worldwide for its advancements in training, which now sits virtually idle because of the coal market. I oppose repeal of the prevailing wage, but also bring to you this morning a challenge. I agree that we need to disrupt the status quo and reinvent West Virginia to be better educated and be more agile to change, but let's not do this on the backs of the working middle class of the people of West Virginia. The loss of each coal job has fallen across the state, and each of you are dealing with those losses in tax revenues and the declining coal market, and I ask each of you to reconsider compounding the problem by cutting wages and tax revenue for the West Virginia construction worker. These men and women face many challenges. It's not unusual for a West Virginia construction worker to drive more than an hour to get to their workplace. They're not able to work each day due to weather conditions, whether it be heat or cold. And they face the declining job market. West Virginia construction workers are trained, local workers who value their jobs, their family, and their state. And let me tell you, they've built the foundation that you're working from right now. Rather than cut the wages for these hard-working people, let's build a better business climate that encourages new investments in West Virginia and protect the West Virginia construction worker and the working middle class. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Our final speaker, John Smacklaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Strickland. I am a commercial general contractor here in Charleston, West Virginia, Maynard C. Smith Construction Company. And I am here to speak in opposition of the repeal of prevailing wage. We've had a number of people talk about the support of the worker and the support of the business, and we've had these associations talk in support of prevailed wage. We've had passionate individuals talk about support of their living wage. And I would like to say, from a business perspective, there are three factors that we get under the prevailed wage umbrella. And those factors are a certified apprenticeship training program. We can talk about vocational, teaching a person how to weld, but we're talking about our workers welding 75 feet in the air. It's a little different than being on the ground. So these apprenticeship training individuals are incorporated into our workforce, a regenerating Second, we have a 10-hour training for each worker, an OSHA 10-hour training, which means that when the worker comes on-site, he knows what he's doing, he knows what to watch out for, he knows what is safe and what is unsafe. The third thing we get, and I don't think we make enough of it, in West Virginia's current environment, is a drug-free workplace. We're not 100%. We're trying to be 100% on our job sites. Most of these workers, they get drug-tested one time a year, but they get random probably three, four times a year, depending on the number of employees, employers they work for. We random, and we random, and people know that we random, so we get the better worker. When the better worker comes out on-site, he's more aware of what is happening, and he's acting safe. Those three things make us very, very competitive. They're a productive workforce. I would hate to see us lose that business edge that I think we have from the lack of a prevailed wage. So, I'll leave you with one final thing. I've always believed that when you do something, if you hurt one individual, one West Virginian, you hurt all West Virginians. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That was our final speaker. Again, I would like to remind you, if you have any written information that you would like to provide to the committee, you can drop it off to the staff in Room 215E. Thank you and have a great day.
You've been tuned to live coverage of the public hearing on House Bill 4005, repealing the prevailing wage. This bill is before the House Government Organization Committee. It is only single reference to that committee, so once the committee decides if it wants to pass it, and pass it on to the floor. Our thanks to the staff of Legislative Services at the Capitol for making this broadcast possible this morning. We will be back at 11 o'clock for coverage of the House and Senate on the West Virginia Channel. These floor sessions will probably be pretty brief today, as this is the first Friday of the 60-day session. And this program reminder, beginning Monday, "The Legislature Today," our nightly broadcast of legislative news and information airs at 6:30 and 11:30 every weeknight on West Virginia PBS. The season premiere is Monday, January 18th. "The Legislature Today" will be repeated weeknights at 10 and weekday mornings at 6:30 here on the West Virginia Channel. I'm Beth Voorhees, see you at 11.